Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Pennsylvania County Planning Commission meeting, July the 7th, 2020. I'll go with the roll call. Ms. Henson.
Present.
Ms. Mies.
Present.
Mr. Horn.
Present.
Mr. Stowe.
Present.
Mr. Dudley.
Present.
Mr. Harker.
Present.
And myself. Let the record show six present two absent. As we go into the moments of silence, I'll ask y'all to remember one of our members, Mr. Horn, who has been sick and he will be having surgery tomorrow. So if everyone please rise to a moment of silence and remain standing in the pledge of allegiance. All citizens of the United States of America will join me, pledge allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may take your seat. Hearing that, the citizens, no one to sign up? Does anyone here tonight not have opportunity to sign up, wish to address the commissioners on anything other than what's on the agenda? Approval of the agenda, need a motion.
Chairman, I so move.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Haymore, second for Mr. Stowe, the agenda being approved as presented in favor of Mr. Raggedale, right hand. Motion's pass six, four, zero against two absent. Approval of the minutes, June the 2nd, 2020.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the minutes as presented from June 2nd, 2020.
Motion for Mr. Dudley, second.
Second.
Second for Mr. Stowe, in favor, in right hand. Motion's pass six, four, zero against two absent. Chairman's report. I'll remind us, although not being able to attend our July meeting, having the COVID-19 virus delayed my legal placement, this is supposed to take place on Wednesday, July the 8th. I want to thank you and my fellow commissioners for reaching out while I had the virus. Thank you for, first, for all the prayers, and second, for your genuine concern for me. It was scary, familiar, filled with uncertainty. Hopefully, I will be able to attend our August meeting. Brian Horn, he will be going in surgery tomorrow and will be hospitalized 23 hours, he told me. Ladies and gentlemen, assuming to Article 5, Division 7 of the Pennsylvania County zoning ordinance, we, the planning commission, have been entitled to hear and decide specific applications in support of said ordinance and to make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors or the Board of Zoning Appeals. In accomplishing this important task, we are charged with the motive to health, safety, and general wealth of our citizens of Pennsylvania County. We must ensure that all our decisions and recommendations be directed to these departments and that each be consistent with the environment, comprehensive plan, and best interest of Pennsylvania County, its citizens, and its posterity. Anyone here to speak to the board regarding zoning cases will be limited to three minutes. The 704, case R-20-014 is open to public hearing.
Case R-20-014, Shaco Solar LLC has petitioned to rezone nine parcels of land, a total of 74.40 acres located on Highway 57, Halifax Road, in the Bannister Election District, from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to RC, an RC1 Residential Combined Subdivision District, to A1 Agricultural District, for a utility-scale solar energy facility, which will also require a special use permit. Once the properties are rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, the representatives with Shaco Solar LLC are here to represent the petition.
Mr. Harker.
Hello.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Would you like to present anything to the commission? I would, if I could.
I would, as this is a new project and just introduce the company and the project so people know it.
You're welcome to take your mask off.
I think I will, thanks very much. It's freeing.
Yes, sir.
I have a new respect for the healthcare folks that wear these all the time. Thank you for the opportunity. Am I limited to three minutes here? Okay, thank you. I did pass out some slides that everyone has, just a handful of slides, and wanted to make a little introduction to the project that we have contemplated for here in Pennsylvania County. Once again, my name is Charlie Falter. I'm the project manager for this project. This is a 60-megawatt solar project with a 20-megawatt energy storage component that's part of it. Just moving on to slide number two after the cover slide, I'll tell you briefly about 174 Power Global and our parent company, Hanwha. 174 Power Global is a developer, owner, and operator of solar projects in North America. We've completed many, many projects totaling more than 2,000 megawatts of total capacity across those projects. We are a wholly-owned subsidiary of Hanwha. Now, Hanwha's not a household name, but in the solar industry, it's a very well-known name because Hanwha is one of the largest solar module manufacturers in the world. And actually, in North America, we are the largest solar module manufacturer in North America. We've got a large manufacturing facility just not far south of here in Dalton, Georgia, that generates 1,000, sorry, 1,600 megawatts of module capacity every year. So we can provide a lot of modules to a lot of projects, not just our own that we develop, but to others as well. Hanwha is a holding company. We have a number of different industries. Energy and solar is a big component of that. However, we do have a regional presence here with our Hanwha Azdell manufacturing facility, which is just up in Lynchburg. They produce automotive components. So it's just one sister company that does that part of the business, just recognizing that we have a regional presence here. If you turn to slide three, this gives you a sense of where this solar project would be if approved, and it's really essentially central Pennsylvania County, east-central Pennsylvania County, just a little east of where we stand right now. And I provided this slide just to give you a sense for where this project is relative to the county and the surrounding towns. Now, if you zoom in on the preliminary plan that we have, going to slide number four, this encompasses a footprint of 885 acres in total. We'll actually use much less of that, about 370 acres. And so it's really just a small component of it. We do have our point of interconnection on the western side of the project. There's an existing transmission line that crosses one of our project parcels, so no new transmission lines required. We'll be tapping the line right there. The energy storage component of our project, it says 20 megawatts, but in terms of footprint, it's very small. It only takes up a couple of acres of space. That will be located adjacent to our project substation, where the point of interconnection is on that western side. You see some other features here in the agenda. We are preparing and have almost finished preparing a special use permit application that will be submitted within a matter of days following this meeting. And I know that gets hold and abeyance until the rezoning is approved, if it's approved. And so, but we are preparing that. This will be one of the elements of that application, so you'll see this again, this preliminary site plan. Moving on to the next slide, number five, this shows the parcels to be rezoned. This is a little bit of a hard slide to see, as Ms. Raggedale pointed out. This is, let's remind me, nine, I think it's nine parcels we're requesting, nine parcels totaling 74 acres of land. It's a small amount of the land that we need, up to 885 acres, but it's an important piece, important pieces to link the project together so that it's contiguous and everything fits So moving on to the next slide, number six, I think everyone here is well-familiar with solar projects at this point. You've had a number of prior projects come before you. You've asked questions. The companies proposing those projects have provided input. Here are common areas of concern. I think you've seen these before. Sound is really not an issue for solar projects. Solar is virtually silent at a distance. At 150 feet, it's about equivalent to your household refrigerator, and that comes from the inverters that makes a humming noise, but it's not very loud at all. Again, 150 feet, about the sound level of your household refrigerator. All of our inverters will be at least 200 feet from the nearest residence. The other thing to mention, of course, is it's a solar project. It only operates in the daytime, so there's no nighttime operation. Traffic during operations is negligible. It's a couple of pickup trucks for maintenance and operation. During construction, of course, we do have to bring the equipment in, the modules and the other equipment to build the facility out. That'll take a little bit less than a year in total. And of course, we will coordinate with Pennsylvania County and the Virginia Department of Transportation to make sure there's a smooth flow of traffic and that the equipment gets in safely where it needs to be. We do have four access points in our preliminary site plan, so it spreads the distribution of trucks turning in and out of the project. In terms of visual, of course, you have your zoning ordinance that requires vegetative screening, which, of course, we will comply with. That's common throughout many, most locations at this point. We have a project just north of here in Campbell County, and it's a similar concept. And so we will, of course, apply vegetative screening wherever needed, and then once that's mature, it will render the project virtually invisible to the public. So effectively, you won't see it, you won't hear it, you won't smell it, doesn't have any emissions. It will be rendered virtually invisible. Decommissioning, always an important aspect. We will provide a decommissioning plan, as is required by your ordinance, prior to the start of construction. We will also provide a decommissioning bond to provide financial security for the decommissioning of the project. Let me turn to the last slide here, benefits. This is a large capital investment project. It's, this project will cost about $85 million in total capital investment. In terms of property tax revenue, we estimate about $85,000 per year over the 35-year life of the project, which is many multiples higher than what the existing property tax revenue is from the land at the moment. In terms of jobs during construction, we estimate about 135 full-time equivalent jobs during the construction period, again, about a year-long period. During operations, two full-time jobs locally, equivalent of one full-time job more remotely for remote monitoring, back office operations, accounting, and billing, and so forth. And then, lastly, this is a supply of long-term, low-cost renewable energy, enough to supply 13,000 homes. And I can tell you, I've been doing energy, in the energy business, for 30 years. I've worked on coal projects, which dates me to the early days of my career, combined cycle, gas-fire projects, wind projects, and now solar projects. Solar prices have come very, have come down very meaningfully and are very, very competitive. You have very competitive pricing with a very environmentally friendly project. Solar's time has come. It has arrived, and that's why you're seeing projects like you're seeing in locations like this, to bring to bear this, really, a great, great product, electricity with a great way to produce it. And with that, let me take any questions that anyone has.
Have you contacted the Lysol-Johns, the fire department, EMS, and don't know what is going on? What's your plan to do?
Yeah, I didn't quite hear with the background, the fire department and EMS, yes.
EMS, Lysol-Johns area, have you contacted them and don't know what is going on?
No, we've not yet done that, but we will do that, and certainly before we start construction. It's a typical part of our plan, is to have a meeting to talk about gate access, talk about the battery energy storage system, the substation that's going to be there, and the panels themselves. So we will have a meeting and a training session with the, yeah, that was the magic word. Yeah.
Training special on the battery.
For sure. And that's a standard part of our procedure for developing projects as we go into construction and then in operations. That'll be updated periodically as time goes on because we know members of the EMS and the fire department change over time, and procedures change over time, and so we want to make sure that safety is paramount. And these projects are, of course, very safe. There's no moving parts, but nevertheless, things do happen, and so we want to make sure that we are able to address anything that happens.
Next question. I understood, was just going through the slides, I believe you said it's going to be four construction entrances throughout this property. I know this comes down later on, after you get your permits and approval and everything. Would you apply with the V-NOT as far as making a permit for construction entrances at these locations?
For sure, yeah. We'll need an entry permit from the Virginia Department of Transportation, and we'll secure that with them. We are showing four on our preliminary site plan, and based on what I see, I think we'll need at least three, maybe not that fourth one. And so I just surface that to say that as we do have interactions with Virginia Department of Transportation, do engineering, maybe it becomes three, but our current plan shows four.
I understand. Ms. Henderson, you have a question?
No, I appreciate it, and you've answered every question, and these do typically come up. I have no questions, and I haven't heard anything from any of the constituents yet, so.
Thank you.
Charlie, is this your first venture in Virginia?
My first trip to Virginia.
No, I said, with this site, do you have?
Oh, no, we have a project that's a little bit further advanced up in Campbell County. It's called Pigeon Run, and that has secured the special use permit approval by the Campbell County. There's the Board of Supervisors approve it, planning commission first, and then the Board of Supervisors. They approved our site plan on January, I think it was January 7th of this year. And so we have that project, so a little bit further advanced than this one. It's also a 60-megawatt project, really pretty similar projects, this one and that project just to the north of here.
Do you have a question?
Mr. Chairman.
No one.
I think Mr. Motley had mentioned it, but, you know, just like to reiterate the fact that, you know, I don't know if these folks are in your district or whatever, but get out there and contact these folks and talk to them and just let them know what's going on, because, you know, sometimes it's concerned because they don't know.
And you raise a great issue, and it is, we've got ourselves in a bit of a conundrum here with the COVID. In that project in Campbell County, we did have, back in October, we had a public meeting. We had about 30 people showed up, and we went through a more expansive presentation, opportunity for question and answer. Here, because of COVID, when this emerged, it just didn't allow us to do this. We have been struggling to figure out how best to do that, and also, internet access and internet use is a little bit more limited here. I hear you loud and clear. I totally agree with you. We have met, by virtue of securing the land that we've sought to secure, we've met just about everybody in the surrounding area by virtue of doing that. And that doesn't mean 100%, and so we'll continue to reach out to folks by phone, and if they're willing to meet as we get on top of this COVID situation, certainly want to have that interaction and allow for people. I think one thing we're planning to do is send a mail or out to some radius around with a fact sheet, contact information, give people a chance to call. We have found that to be useful in Campbell County, where at the public meeting, we gave out that fact sheet, and people did call us afterwards and ask questions and so forth. But, yeah.
This way it'll answer questions that people might have, and, you know, you just, because you're moving into their neighborhood, and these are just home folks, you know what I'm saying?
Absolutely.
That's what, I think that's what we're trying to really do, is just to reach out with the public, so, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Also, I'd like to add and suggest, previously, we've had complaints on other projects that the adjacent property owners have not received notification, maybe missed mail, you know how that goes with the post office. But where I worked previously, we always certified mail, if it's something that important, that you want the adjacent property owners to hear or the people involved. And if you send a registered certified, they have to, the property owner or whoever receives mail in that box that you're addressing that letter to, has to sign, and then that's returned to you, and you know that they received it. So then you don't have the feedback later, well, I didn't get notification, or some people might throw it in the trash and not think it's that important to read. It might protect you. That's the only suggestion.
Yeah, thank you for that. That makes a lot of sense. We did hear that in the case of one landowner, actually showed up at our community meeting, so he got the message somehow, but, for purposes of that, but point well taken. Thank you for that.
Do you have any questions? No one to sign up to speak? If anyone here came in late, did not have opportunity to sign up, wish to address on this case? Anything else to respond to?
Not for me, thanks.
721, case R-20-014 is closed to public hearing. Before we go in any further, a white suburban, license number V, like in Victor, Z like in Zebra, M like in Michael, 1278, is parked in private property, blocking someone in the property, and it needs to be moved. Thank you. Our commissioners, any discussions?
I've asked what questions I needed.
Ms. Henderson.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. In the case of R-20-014, I'd like to make a motion that the planning commission recommends to the Board of Supervisors that this zoning request be granted.
I'll second that motion.
Motion for Ms. Henderson, second for Mr. Dudley, recommend to the Board of Supervisors the zoning for this be changed from R1 to A1. Any other discussions? If not, Ms. Raggedale, will you call the roll?
Mr. Motley?
Yes.
Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Mr. Harker?
Mr. Stowe?
Yes.
Ms. Mies?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
By a vote of six, four, zero against, two absent, case R-20-014 is recommended to the Board of Supervisors that zoning be changed from R1 to A1. 722, case S-20-009, open to public hearing.
Case S-20-009, RE Blue Ridge LLC has petitioned for a special use permit on a total of 2,263.19 acres located on Tightsqueeze, Irish, West Giles, Hickory, Concord, and Deep Run Roads on Newby Lane and off of White Oak Circle in the Callens, Gretna-Bannister, and Tunstall Election Districts for a utility-scale solar energy facility. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, the representatives from RE Blue Ridge LLC are here to represent the petition.
Mr. Barner, representatives, I know y'all want to sit after your presentations, so good evening, and welcome.
Good evening. My name is Steve Barner, and I'm a development manager with Recurrent Energy. And tonight, I have assisting me, Adam Peterson, for a short presentation here. A lot of this may be repeat information, information that we've previously presented to you all, or information that you just heard from another fellow here in the industry. Yeah, we're happy to walk this around if that's helpful to kind of get that.
Move this mask.
Okay, perfect. All right, so just wanted to start by kind of going over some of the project details here again. This project has been in the works for several years now, back in 2017 and 2018. We were doing a lot of desktop review to pinpoint and identify location here in the county with access to a transmission line. Going into 2018 and 2019, we worked with various, you know, members of your community here to put land under site control in order to apply for the project here locally and on the transmission system. Here we are in 2020. We're taking the project here through the state and the local permitting process, which is why we're here today, tonight. This project expects to go to construction sometime in probably late 2022, so that's roughly a little over two years from where we are right now, with a commercial operation date, which in the industry, all that means is that's when construction is deemed complete, typical, you know, to utility standards here. And so that's expected by the end of 2023. So this project, maximum capacity is about 150 megawatts AC. That powers roughly 37,500 homes, and we're looking at a total acreage here of roughly 1,400 acres that are going to be kind of within the fence boundary. At the time of construction, we're expecting peak construction jobs, kind of in the order of magnitude, around 350 jobs, as many as possible, you know, locally sourced here from the county. Over the lifetime of the project, we've conducted a study that's a part of the SUP application materials that you all have received, that suggests and estimates about $7.5 million in direct county revenue over the useful life of this project. Adam, if you don't mind, just advance in there to the second board here. A lot of this you just heard from the gentleman before me, but what to expect during project operations? A lot of these are common questions, and so we just want to make sure that the information that you all have is correct. But, you know, after construction, the project goes right into operations. It's a relatively low impact, relatively low amount of maintenance, ongoing maintenance that is needed once the facility is fully constructed. In terms of full-time staff, there's going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of two to four local folks that are on staff doing a lot of preventative maintenance, visual inspections, preventative care, you know, mowing, making sure everything is kept up well on site. Part of that onsite management will be the vegetation management, and so as we've talked about previously and you just heard as well, part of this vegetation management is, you know, local or native grasses and also a screening component, where we're going to be planting, landscaping, or vegetative buffer around the perimeter of the project. So that'll be some of the vegetation management and upkeep that's going on post-construction. Another common question we get a lot is, you know, are these panels going to be washed? Are you going to be using water here locally or importing water? And so, you know, solar panels require periodic washing to perform at their kind of optimal level. And so in some places, we see that washing is absolutely necessary, maybe in like the desert southwest. Given the weather patterns here locally and kind of what we'd expect going forward, we don't anticipate panel washing to be conducted at this site. And then, you know, another common question we get around panel washing is, you know, if there is panel washing, you know, what kind of materials are used? And we just want to be clear that no solvents or, you know, cleaning agents will be used in that washing process if it's deemed appropriate. Obviously, there are seasons of drought, and so that's just something we keep in mind. All right, Adam, if you don't mind, moving to the third slide here. I wanted to spend just a few moments talking about kind of the third and final phase of the project. We, you know, there's kind of, if you break it down into kind of three phases here, it's, you know, construction and pre-construction activities, what happens during operations. We talked about it being very low impact. And then, kind of the third and final phase is, well, what happens when this is done operating, right? And so we expect the useful life for this type of a project to be about 40 years. That's kind of the industry standard. In order to repower the project or come back and, you know, rebuild it or uplift it to get it to continue beyond 40 years, you know, that would require coming before you all again and seeking the necessary permits to continue that project operation. So the, you know, we're anticipating here at the end of 40 years that this project will actually be decommissioned. Decommissioned here means that we're, I'm looking down here at the bottom of the slide, but we're removing all of the equipment from the land, removing all of the, you know, all the panels, all the support structures, any buildings, cabling, or electrical components that are on site. We're also removing any of the gravelled or access roads within the fence line as well. And then we'll be grading and reseeding the earth to make sure that it returns to its natural state. So, again, this is something that So again, this is something that you all have addressed in your ordinance quite well as well. So there's a decommissioning bond that will be presented prior to construction even starting. And that will continue to be looked at and updated if necessary, kind of a five-year period here. So I think I'll pause there and just see if there are any questions on that or if you have further questions about our application generally. But I wanted to make sure we just kind of gave a brief overview of where we are today and, you know, where this goes from here.
Have you contacted or had any, I know the virus is not for open house, have you contacted the EMS and the fire departments in the local area?
We had meetings scheduled, and we had to cancel some of those, given the virus. And so that, it's again, our process. We will be sure to have those meetings. And prior to construction, we do offer training on every project we do, whether or not battery storage is included.
Mr. Byrne, and you said that there would be approximately 350 jobs with this construction?
Yes, ma'am.
Will they all be locally, or will you bring your construction companies in? Would this be from our county or the area, or are you in a position to say that right now?
Yes, ma'am. What we typically do is we hire an engineering and procurement construction firm. And we look for them to sub out as much of the work as they can here locally. So yes, the intention is that of those 350 jobs, the vast majority will be sourced here.
And there will be a few, like, permanent jobs, you were saying, to maintain?
Correct, correct. You know, we expect somewhere in the ballpark of two to four. And those will have to be local to keep up with onsite maintenance.
Okay.
After you get in operation, can you inform the commissioner and the press what possibly with the tax revenue will be? Can you discuss that?
Yes, sir. We've done a study, and we've included it in the application packet. And this is a third-party study from a fellow PhD here in the Commonwealth. And he's looked at a lot of projects like ours. And by his estimate, we're looking at a roughly $7.5 million in direct tax revenue to the county over that 35, 40-year useful life. And that's just the tax, you know, tax portion.
As I asked you previously, I know down the road, you've got the permits and everything. VDOT, I know you'll probably have multiple construction entrances. Have you contacted VDOT to find out what the requirement for construction entrance, or if they will be required?
Yes, sir. We're very familiar with that process. We've done some initial work on that with VDOT and using a consultant. And so we anticipate going through that process to procure those permits and access.
Mr. Chairman, how many projects have you completed as a company?
So, the company's been around since kind of the late 2000s. And of various sizes, we've completed 70 projects.
70?
Yes, sir.
Any in Pennsylvania County or?
In the local area, maybe Campbell County? None in Pennsylvania County, sir. Our closest projects that have been completed, fully constructed, are in North Carolina, Cumberland and Cabarrus County, one in each.
That's just one of the common questions we ask. Thank you.
Of course.
Steve, y'all one of the companies looking at Greenville County?
Not at this time, sir.
Mr. Chairman? I wanted, one of the common complaints, I guess you would say, that we've heard previously, everybody's concerned about the site of the panels. Would you sort of tell us exactly what you're going to do to help do the buffer in those areas?
Of course. So the ordinance, you all have an ordinance that has a component called, you know, vegetative screening. And so we've proposed a vegetative screening buffer around the perimeter of the project here that we believe complies with your ordinance. And so the way that works is that at the time of planting, we're going to be planting, you know, trees and shrubs. At the time of planting, they're going to vary between four and six feet tall. You know, if it's a shrub, it's going to be closer kind of than a four-foot size. If it's a tree, it's going to be closer to the six-foot size. At maturity, you know, these trees are going to be a minimum of eight feet. Shrubs are going to be right around there, too. But obviously, a tree is going to be covering kind of the upper story. Shrubs and grasses are going to be covering the low to medium story here. And so actually, we've put together a visualization here. And what this is, is this is current view along our project property here. And what you have in the larger view here is what it will look like once these trees are planted and have grown to maturity. Now, people ask us all the time, you know, why are the trees only four or six feet tall when you put them in the ground? Well, in order for those trees to be successfully transplanted and to reach maturity, mature height, the highest success really is when you plant the trees kind of at that earlier stage as opposed to planting a tree with a much larger root structure.
So it depends on the weather, as to the height, how long would it take to get to the completed height?
Correct. We're expecting roughly three, three to four years for these to be above the eight-foot minimum.
So what about if some of them die? I mean, this is just a little thing for me. I don't like dead stuff around. Do you, you monitor that and come back and replant?
Yes, ma'am. That's definitely something we can do.
In some of your full-time papers, will these employees, they'll maintain the fence? Keep the vegetation growth off of it, sprayed?
Yes, sir.
Trees was to fall on it, remove the trees, repower the fence?
Absolutely. It's in our best interest to not only protect the property, you know, this is going to be a utility, a utility scale project and needs to meet all the utility standards. And so if there's a break in the fence, if there's trees falling over, if there's stuff growing up on the fence, that ruins or that, you know, can degrade or compromise the overall security of the site. And so it's in our best interest, and we, you know, that's exactly how we manage this type of stuff. And then, you know, just to add on to that, you know, we're going to want to make sure that the grasses on-site are maintained at a reasonable level so they're actually not shading the panels. So we're very, very acutely aware of those issues.
And the fence will be checked on the fence, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Ragsdale, but I don't know if that's specified in the ordinance, but we had just proposed, you know, six foot with a foot of barbed wire on the top to bring it to a total of seven feet to comply with the ordinance.
And that's acceptable per our ordinance?
Have you made contact with adjoining property owners? I know the virus stepped in and everything, but through levels or literature or something, have you been able to make contact with the adjoining property owners?
Yes, sir, we did. And Adam, I don't know if it makes sense to... We have, as part of our, as part of our application packet, we had put together some of our community outreach plans and some of the feedback we received during this process. But just taking a step back, you know, we were before you all in April, to go through a rezoning process first, we were written up in the paper in April. You know, we had communicated with you all at that time that our intention was, given the virus was kind of breaking out just around that time, that we were going to be, you know, doing a mailer campaign, which was sending a packet of information, which included actually a lot of these boards in the packet to every adjacent landowner on, you know, on the project. As part of that packet, we provided these maps and detailed, you know, project narratives and information about the project. We also provided a form to be mailed back to us with any comments, feedback. And we have received some of those comments and feedback. And those have been incorporated into this community outreach section in your packets. I believe so. And in addition to that, we also set up a project website with a lot of the same information available on the web. Now, we know that, you know, internet access, you know, some people may have issue, you know, obtaining that. And that's why the mailer was put together, so that there'd be a hard copy. Those mailers were FedExed. We do have proof of receipt of sending those out if that's of interest to you all. And lastly, we did run an ad in the paper here to make sure that folks were aware that this was something that's coming up. Doing our best effort here to be transparent during this really kind of unprecedented time. So I hope that's, you know, something that, you know, if there are any further questions, you know, we've done our best to address everything that came in. But I guess if there are other, you know, outstanding questions, we'd be happy to handle those.
Steve, I'd like to commend you all, not only for, I guess you say, the neighbors around there, but also talking with us individually and taking your time to do that. I appreciate that.
Of course. Happy to.
Excuse me. I must add that you all really did your homework. This packet is so detailed, the maps. And Ms. Ragsdale says it was a huge packet that they received. So thank you all for trying to give the information to us in detail. I commend you for that.
Happy to.
Been going over the package. I know I overlooked it. I'm sure it's in here somewhere. Where is your battery storage location, Commissioner?
At this time, there is no proposed battery storage on this project.
Will thou be one later on after all the permits and everything?
We can always come back to you. If that's an update that we foresee. As of right now, that's not proposed. But happy to be back before you if something changes.
Will there be a substation?
Yes, there will be a tap, which is a switching station or substation. Yes, sir.
It's got to be something. Okay.
That's the location. How deep in the field where you can drive off the road a little ways from Concord Methodist Church?
It's going to be a little bit, I think, northwest of there, sir. North-northwest.
Any other questions?
That's all I've got.
I think it's all.
I have no one sign up to speak. If anyone here wish to address the commissioners? As each one of you received, we have a charming landowner that could not be here tonight and he submitted questions at home time to Ms. Ragsdale and Mr. Byrne. And they, I want to thank Mr. Byrne and Ms. Ragsdale for answering his questions. As y'all could see, it's quite a difficult response. And then he finally summarized it down that he has several questions that I'd like to be able to get to the record. And one question that stands out that I think I should address too is he has a question about setback. And at this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Byrne, would you like to correspond on your setback, your response back on the setback to the first question? This is a date that you like to fix that we discussed. And then Ms. Ragsdale might add on what is the county office and everything. So if you present your opinion, because his opinion is different from what I understand y'all have. And each one of the commissioners has a...
Yes. Of course, happy to. And I'd like to actually introduce my colleague, Kayla Loughlin, who has prepared a large part of this packet to actually address this question in particular. If it's all right, I'll concede the mic to her.
So our engineering consultant analyzed the perimeter of each different solar array to determine the specific yard types, which would be front, side, back, and corner. And from there, they applied the representative setback distance according to the ordinance. So I'm going to point out on the map where Mr. Brusso's parcels are and why we determined the setback distance for that particular area. So right over here is Mr. Brusso's property. And Burke is proposing the 410 setback along this line right here. And what we determined according to the ordinance is that this is actually a corner setback. And so with the corner, you have a minimum of 35-foot setback. According to the ordinance, 35-182. So that's why along this distance here, we apply a 35-foot setback, not a 410-foot setback. So we believe it's a matter of interpretation.
Ms. Ragsdale, you have anything you'd like to add?
Yes, and on his, his property is actually behind that property, which would be the rear yard per our ordinance. So therefore, he would need to meet the 40-foot setback from his property line into... They would need to meet it from his property line into theirs, not his 410.
It's basically his interpretation of our standing of what he calls a front fence property versus what is actually on the tax map. Is that correct?
Correct. There is a private road that runs between his property and their parcel.
Right there.
But it is a private road, so therefore, we don't consider that figuring the road frontage.
Okay.
Any other questions on that? On the next of his questions, which would be the DEQ stormwater runoff. Who determines, and that's one of his questions too, who determines the amount of runoff? Can you explain how y'all determine the amount of runoff? I told you probably have a consultant, if it does that. But do you know how they gamble that, if it's a question?
That's correct. So we're going to retain a consulting firm for the stormwater permit with DEQ. We're not to that process yet, and although I claim to be an engineer, sometimes I am not. So I personally can't attest to how those calculations are performed. But we will retain a Virginia-certified consultant and engineer to perform those calculations for us and go through the DEQ process and the county for the stormwater permit.
That is forwarded on to, as well as the county, forwarded on to the state DEQ. Is that correct?
From what I understand, in Virginia, some local jurisdictions maintain the authority of the stormwater permit. Some local jurisdictions refer back to the state. With Pennsylvania County, I believe it refers back to the state, but there is still some coordination to occur with the county. So we will be following that process.
All right, that's, that's, that finding, will they forward it on to the adjoining property owners?
I don't think...
That's basically the question.
I don't think that's part of the process, but I haven't been through the Virginia stormwater specific process yet. But we're more than happy to maintain transparency and work with adjacent landowners if they have any questions.
It's not forwarded, but our office does receive copies of all their plans and the permits and all comments from DEQ and correspondence between DEQ and applicant. And so if any of the property owners do have questions, our office can provide that information to them.
Well, that was my next question. If there is a note, he has a complaint, who does he go to if he didn't never receive any information of the initial findings? information of the initial findings?
We would work with DEQ to make sure that any concerns or any things that are, anything that is not in compliant with the permit and construction, as DEQ approved it, was corrected.
That's good.
Yes, sir. Mm-hmm.
And if I might add, this, this is no different from the other projects that you have here locally. All of these projects are going to go through the state process and get looked at. There will be, you know, a similar, similar process for each of us.
And his other question, we go back to the private road we was talking about, for which is Beagle Lane. That's a private road. Do y'all, have y'all assumed the mission to use that? I don't know why he's.
Right, no, we, we don't have any anticipation of using that road. We, it was never in our plans to use that road for any type of access or construction or operation, so we always assumed it was a private road and designed accordingly.
So we know the Beagle Lane, for which is a state-maintained highway, that you'd have to follow the VDOT guidelines.
Right, VDOT and, and DEQ, so both.
Y'all have any other questions?
I'm good. Thank you.
Case S, Day 20, Day 009, closing public area. I want to add, thank Ms. Ragsdale, that must have found a fault by our effort in corresponding with the people and asking that question. Add the package to the review. We appreciate it. Ms. Meese?
Well, this is a huge operation, and it's in three districts, as we all know, Bannister, Tunstall, and Callens-Gretner, which I represent. Change is very difficult for all of us. Nobody likes a change. We know that. That's why we're sitting here without a mask tonight. Our lives have been, we're having to adjust to a new life. I know most of you here on both sides of the aisle, it's very difficult when you have to hear these cases, because you want everybody happy. They're good people. Concord Church has a lot of good people there, as well as all of that neighborhood. And I think it's great that you work together. There are six families with this project. You can't blame them to want to look to the future and their retirement of when that land, how that land can better serve them. This is a business opportunity for them that I think everybody would have taken advantage that could have and known about it. This operation will have no noise for the neighbors to hear. He said a humming noise at the most. It's environmentally friendly. It's nothing you have to smell, it's no odors. And plus, they'll come back, could come back in 40 years and take everything up. They're going to maintain it. They're going to put a buffer, that's always a sticker for me. I would want a buffer, not probably want, I would still like to have something to cover the panels, and I think they will work with us. I mean, the county has their audience that they have to follow. There are good leaders in this community, all of you, and so we have to make changes for progress in our lives. If we stuck to the old times, we'd never have electricity, telephones, computers, technology. But that is a beautiful area up there. I went yesterday. You've got a beautiful view of the mountains. And these families have had these farms for a lifetime, and they will miss the caring for it, too. But it comes a time in everybody's life, including my own. I'm at that age, you're looking for the future. You want to provide for yourself, and survival is what it's all about. And we know that tobacco and agriculture has a lot of uncertainties now. So, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve Case S 20009, subject to the conditions that were of concern submitted by staff with the following amendments. Number five to add, the vegetation shall be evergreen and designed to be at least 15 feet in height at maturity of any plantings, and shall be a minimum of six feet in height at time of planting. Existing vegetation shall be maintained and supplemented with new plantings as needed to maintain required screening. Also, the road repairs, be sure that we approve. All public and private roads must remain open during construction. Any damage to roads caused by construction will be properly repaired to pre-construction conditions and/or VDOT standards were deemed necessary.
Second.
Motion for Ms. Meese, second from Mr. Dudley, with the conditions. Any discussions? Ms. Ragsdale, you can call the row.
Mr. Motley?
Yes.
Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Mr. Harker?
Mr. Stowe?
Yes.
Ms. Meese?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
By a vote of six, four, zero against, two absent, Case S, Day 20, Day 009, recommended to the Board of Zoning Appeals, there'll be special use permit for a solar energy facility to be issued. Any old business? Any new business?
What have, what have we got on for next month? Do y'all know yet, as far as cases?
One, uh, one solar.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, and a kennel, a kennel on 41.
Okay.
What now?
A kennel.
41?
Yeah, um.
West Double Chatter.
Mount Herman. So, yeah, um, the, the, Mount Herman Pet Center, right there on 41, they're looking to expand. So they're looking to purchase the property next door and expand their business.
Yep. 758, meeting adjourned. Thank y'all.
Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight.